Nance, please call the roll.
Plakitis?
Yes.
Hey Lightner?
Here.
Bongard?
Here.
Bancioni?
Yes.
Patola?
Here.
Worvall?
Here.
Bezner?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Thank you. Tonight's invocation will be given by Rita Paylater.
We ask for the council to be enabled and staff to, for the council and staff to be enabled to be good stewards of the responsibility bestowed on us to lead and involve the people of St. Charles in accomplishing our mission and goals. We ask for continued guidance and to be sensitive to the needs of the people we serve. Amen.
Thank you. The pledge, well, David, please quickly open the pledge.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. This month of, the month of June is Pride Month, and as I did last year, I'll read a proclamation, and then I'll call Mike Linder up to accept the proclamation and say a few words. Whereas the city of St. Charles, Illinois enjoys the title Pride of the Fox in part because it celebrates the diversity of people who live, work, and visit St. Charles, and whereas St. Charles is welcoming and inclusive community for LGBTQ+ individuals and families who choose to live, work, and enjoy St. Charles, and whereas LGBTQ+ residents have made visible positive contribution to the quality of life in St. Charles, and where is in addition to the LGBTQ residents, there are many residents who are allies to the LGBTQ+ community and cause, and whereas throughout the country's history, LGBTQ+ people have faced prejudice and discrimination, and whereas in America, all people should be able to live with dignity and equal rights under the law. Whereas the recognition of the demonstrations known as the Stonewall Uprising in June 1969, the month of June, is traditionally recognized as Pride Month in the United States and the state of Illinois. Now therefore, Ilor of I-Tech, Mayor of the city of St. Charles, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2022 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in the city of St. Charles, and call upon the residents of our community to celebrate the great diversity of St. Charles and work together to break down the walls of discrimination, intolerance, and lack of understanding, and promote full equal rights for all Americans regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity. And B is further resolved that the city of St. Charles will raise the rainbow flag for the month of June 2022 as a sign of St. Charles' support for the principles of LGBTQ+ pride. So Mike, I invite you up.
Your proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you.
The pleasure.
Thank you, Mayor. Tip this up a little bit. We're very happy to be here tonight, the second year in a row we'll have a proclamation, and the first year to have our flag raising. St. Charles is an increasingly diverse community. It's a good thing. We become stronger as we have more different points of view in the city, and we're very happy to be a part of that. I want to thank the mayor and the council for the proclamation, for the flag raising, for your support. As a token of that, each year for the last year and a half, two years, we've done those commemorative bracelets for the Pride Week, and I'd like to present one to the mayor. If you'd like to pass the bag down, those in the council who would like one or two may take one, and if there are some left at the end, we have some for anybody who would like them. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Sure. Okay, Mr. Plakitis, omnibus vote, please.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the omnibus vote as presented on the agenda.
Second. Moved by Plakitis, second by Paylater.
Thank you.
Nancy, please call the roll.
Bongard?
Yes.
Bancioni?
Yes.
Patola?
Yes.
Worvall?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Plakitis?
Yes.
Hey Lightner?
Yes.
Thank you. There is not any old business this evening. Moving on to new business, the first item, recommendation to approve a resolution approving a license agreement with Mad Bomber Fireworks Productions and the temporary use of 211 North Riverside Avenue for a special fireworks display for a private wedding event at Hotel Baker. Chief Swanson.
Good evening, Mayor, all the persons. We've had a request for a fireworks display related to a wedding event that's coming Saturday at the Hotel Baker. All the paperwork is in order. The legal counsel has come up with the appropriate legal documents. The fireworks display is going to be short-lived, five to 10 minutes, about 525 devices. Largest would be three inches, substantially smaller than what's done at the Fourth of July. It's before you and the packet to consider and/or approve. It would involve use of city property north of the Freedom Shrine in the grassy area between the walkway and the cul-de-sac at the end of Riverside.
Thank you, Chief, and I know Shuki's here. Anyone has any questions for Shuki or Chief?
Yep.
Yes.
Just real quick, Fourth of July, people expect it, even Third of July. I'm just wondering if neighbors will be notified, like maybe, you know, Carol Towers?
They have to notify within the time of the launch.
Perfect.
And they have advised that they've done that. The Mad Bomber Productions that's actually doing the fireworks.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Get the call.
Have there been any, any kind of concerns or anybody, you know, that has a problem with this from the community that's reported back to you?
Nobody's reported back to me. This was very short notice. Normally, we require 60 days. This was done in under three weeks. It just kind of popped up, so. But we have not received anything from the community against it. It was done once before in 2018 for the Hotel Baker's 90th anniversary, so I think they're trying to replicate that event, but it does involve city properties, so our legal counsel had to draft some documents.
And I know it's added work for you, so thank you, but I also know that when we have things like this, it is surprising and exciting for our residents, so I think it'll be a good thing. Any other questions? Okay.
Second.
Yes.
Sorry, real quick.
Sure.
And for future events, they noted that we need 60 days, right?
Yes. This is the first time they brought one before us.
Yeah, right, right, right.
So we advise them, and being a private event, there is associated cost for police, fire, and EMA personnel.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Moved by Bancioni, second by Bongard. Any other questions or comments? No? Nancy, please call the roll.
Bongard?
Yes.
Bancioni?
Yes.
Patola?
Yes.
Worvall?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Plakitis?
Yes.
Hey Lightner?
Yes.
Thank you. There is not any old business this evening. Moving on to new business, the first item, recommendation to approve a resolution approving a license agreement with Mad Bomber Fireworks Productions and the temporary use of 211 North Riverside Avenue for a special fireworks display for a private wedding event at Hotel Baker. Chief Swanson.
Good evening, Mayor, all the persons. We've had a request for a fireworks display related to a wedding event that's coming Saturday at the Hotel Baker. All the paperwork is in order. The legal counsel has come up with the appropriate legal documents. The fireworks display is going to be short-lived, five to 10 minutes, about 525 devices. Largest would be three inches, substantially smaller than what's done at the Fourth of July. It's before you and the packet to consider and/or approve. It would involve use of city property north of the Freedom Shrine in the grassy area between the walkway and the cul-de-sac at the end of Riverside.
Thank you, Chief, and I know Shuki's here. Anyone has any questions for Shuki or Chief?
Yep.
Yes.
Just real quick, Fourth of July, people expect it, even Third of July. I'm just wondering if neighbors will be notified, like maybe, you know, Carol Towers?
They have to notify within the time of the launch.
Perfect. Okay, good. Thank you.
And they have advised that they've done that. The Mad Bomber Productions that's actually doing the fireworks.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Get the call.
Have there been any, any kind of concerns or anybody, you know, that has a problem with this from the community that's reported back to you?
Nobody's reported back to me. This was very short notice. Normally, we require 60 days. This was done in under three weeks. It just kind of popped up, so. But we have not received anything from the community against it. It was done once before in 2018 for the Hotel Baker's 90th anniversary, so I think they're trying to replicate that event, but it does involve city properties, so our legal counsel had to draft some documents.
And I know it's added work for you, so thank you, but I also know that when we have things like this, it is surprising and exciting for our residents, so I think it'll be a good thing. Any other questions? Okay.
Second.
Yes.
Sorry, real quick.
Sure.
And for future events, they noted that we need 60 days, right?
Yes. This is the first time they brought one before us.
Yeah, right, right, right.
So we advise them, and being a private event, there is associated cost for police, fire, and EMA personnel.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Moved by Bancioni, second by Bongard. Any other questions or comments? No? Nancy, please call the roll.
Bongard?
Yes.
Bancioni?
Yes.
Patola?
Yes.
Worvall?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Plakitis?
Yes.
Hey Lightner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C, recommendation to approve a resolution for an electric utility improvement cost agreement with Greco Derosa for the development of Pheasant Run Industrial Park. Do you have anything to add? Did you mention that? Okay. Any questions regarding item C? No? Okay.
So move.
Moved by Worvall?
Second.
Seconded by Bezner. Nancy, please call the roll.
Bongard?
Yes.
Bancioni?
Yes.
Patola?
Yes.
Worvall?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Plakitis?
Yes.
Hey Lightner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C, recommendation to approve a resolution for an electric utility improvement cost agreement with Greco Derosa for the development of Pheasant Run Industrial Park. Do you have anything to add? Did you mention that? Okay. Any questions regarding item C? No? Okay.
So move.
Moved by Worvall?
Second.
Seconded by Bezner. Nancy, please call the roll.
Bongard?
Yes.
Bancioni?
Yes.
Patola?
Yes.
Worvall?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Plakitis?
Yes.
Hey Lightner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C, recommendation to approve a resolution for an electric utility improvement cost agreement with Greco Derosa for the development of Pheasant Run Industrial Park. Do you have anything to add? Did you mention that? Okay. Any questions regarding item C? No? Okay.
So move.
Moved by Worvall?
Second.
Seconded by Bezner. Nancy, please call the roll.
Bongard?
Yes.
Bancioni?
Yes.
Patola?
Yes.
Worvall?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Plakitis?
Yes.
Hey Lightner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C, recommendation to approve a resolution for an electric utility improvement cost agreement with Greco Derosa for the development of Pheasant Run Industrial Park. Do you have anything to add? Did you mention that? Okay. Any questions regarding item C? No? Okay.
So move.
Moved by Worvall?
Second.
Seconded by Bezner. Nancy, please call the roll.
Bongard?
Yes.
Bancioni?
Yes.
Patola?
Yes.
Worvall?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Plakitis?
Yes.
Hey Lightner?
Yes.
Thank you. Committee reports. Ron, anything further?
Oh, let me see here.
Thank you, I was so impressed.
Oh, thank you. I was so impressed. Jeff, okay. Yes, item A2, motion to approve an agreement with Harris Computer Systems for North Star Customer Information System and Building Software Implementation Services and Cloud Hosting for a not-to-exceed cost of $887,010. That was.
You got it. That's right. You got it.
I got it. Okay.
Second.
Moved by Plakitis, seconded by Patola. Ryan, you have questions? Okay. Any questions?
No.
Yes.
Just the clarity, Heather, from you reviewing in the minutes, that the payment, new payment structure will be accomplished after the fact.
You're talking about in terms of the, I'm sorry, Kelly and I keep calling it ACH, and it's not ACH. You're talking about the actual?
Oh, sorry. We're not talking about this one, right? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, the billing. Yeah. It's okay. We're good. Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Moved by Plakitis, seconded by Patola. If there are any questions, Nancy, please call the roll.
Bongard?
Yes.
Bancioni?
Yes.
Patola?
Yes.
Worvall?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Plakitis?
Yes.
Hey Lightner?
Yes.
Thank you. Government services. Ed, anything further?
Nothing further.
Planning and development.
Steve? Yes, I have two. Item C1, motion to approve an ordinance annexing certain unincorporated territory to the city of St. Charles, Illinois.
Moved by Weber, seconded by Bancioni. Are there any questions or comments?
Yep. Just clarity. The annexation is attached to the PUD, correct? Yes.
Russ?
Mr. Chairman answered. Yeah.
Oh, did Steve?
That's okay. Russell. Yeah.
We, I think we got the answer?
Yes.
The first item is just for the annexation of the property, and the development approvals are the second item.
Okay.
But don't we need to have a plan before we can annex it? That's what I'm asking. Is the plan attached to the annexation?
It is not. It's an ordinance annexing the property, followed by an ordinance approving the development.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? We had moved, we moved a second. Nancy, please call the roll.
Bongard?
Yes.
Bancioni?
Yes.
Patola?
Yes.
Worvall?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Plakitis?
Yes.
Hey Lightner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C3, motion to approve an ordinance granting approval of a MAP amendment, special use for PUD and PUD preliminary plan for Springs at St. Charles. Second. Okay. Moved by Weber, seconded by Bancioni. And, yes.
Public comment, public comment, I asked you to vote.
The comments on the city council agenda item? Correct. Typically, they are structured after our vote that power city council is ordered by ordinance. That's why there was public comment, it was to be planned permission as well as P and D. Yeah, Nick, is there anything else, Heather?
No, I've got that. She's correct.
Okay.
There's been two other opportunities for public comment.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, so. Did you have a motion?
We have a motion.
Yeah. Okay. Nancy, any, any questions?
Yeah, just real quick. So I think what I heard Mr. Pepper say is that at committee, there was opportunity for public comments. Is that correct?
Correct. But there's no opportunity now?
There's no opportunity now.
I mean, it should be open for discussion, I would think.
You want us to vote with representative?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm fine if we want to have public comment. I know we have a motion and a second on the table. And Nick, I'll leave it to you.
Yeah. It's really up to discretion of the chair and the council if they want to take it. You're not required to take it. That's why you've, you're on your third step of this by now, and if it'd been unanimous, it'd be in consent agenda. You know, as it is, you have to take the vote as a separate agenda item. You know, that's what public comment is for. This would be the third time that someone would be addressing this matter, but if you want to take public comment, Mayor, that's up to you.
Sure. I'll welcome public comment. I would just ask that, you know, if someone has already stated something, just either ditto it, but we don't need to hear the same thing again. So feel free to raise your hand, and we'll call you up to the mic, and just state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Ron Jaeger. J-A-E-G-E-R. I'm a resident at 4016 Pheasant Court in St. Charles. Thank you for allowing us to have comments. I believe each of you received a copy of my letter. I've got others, if you would like. I would just like to read it. And the reason for comments today, I think, is really there's new information from what the Development Committee was made aware of through the application. Dear City Council and Community and Development, Economic Development Commission, since your Community and Development Committee meeting, public hearing on this project, I have come to learn that while the developer, Continental Properties, included in their application information that this project was private equity funded, I have since learned that while Continental may fund construction and early operational funding using private equity, they apply for and refinance their projects through HUD. As you may probably be aware, HUD refinancing or financing requires some level of subsidized housing units and provides for subsidized income-based housing referred to as Section 8. While I could not find any specific information on their participation in Section 42 TIF financing, I do, I would not be surprised if this also would get mixed into their financing plan. Because of this misrepresentation by the developer, in my experience with Section 8 and, and Section 42 TIF housing in Peoria, we withdraw our support of this project and additionally vehemently oppose this development plan. That was not presented during the informational meetings. And four, let me share my Peoria experience. We provided in Peoria for 24 years on the west side of that town, in a single-family area. In the late 1990s, early 2000s, two 600-plus-unit apartment developments provided HUD, provided PUD approval and were developed, Lexington Hills and Aspen Bluffs, apartments and townhomes. Both were approved as market-rate developments with the understanding that Section 8 and 42 would be their fallback business plan. Once operational, both projects quickly converted their operations and social, to those forms of housing. What followed was social problems escalated. There was a decline in the parental involvement in the public schools in that area, Pleasant Valley. Concurrently, the surrounding residential communities became unofficially designated as a high-crime-rate area by the Peoria Police Department. We only learned of this when we tried to sell our home in 2006. We had an extremely difficult time attracting showings, and only after we pressed our realtor did we learn that the impact of these two housing developments on our home's value. It took us 24 months to sell our home. In order to accomplish this, we lost approximately half of the market value because of the undesirable area that had developed due to these apartments. We don't want this in our area again. Out of curiosity, I researched the current situation of these developments. What I found was shocking. On April 10th of this year, Lexington Home Management Offices were burned out. Yes, burned out. They have, they have severe drug problems and are hauling vehicles without permits from the property. There is a new prohibition list of rules that management of those facilities to residents are causing evictions. I do, I did not research the Peoria Police Department activities, but can only imagine what we would find in this disclosure. Ownership is the only gold standard to ensure that those who reside in a development will care enough about their home and neighborhood, the schools, and all the other aspects of ensuring equality experience. From my brief background and check into Continental's history and means of financing their projects, not mentioning the fact that they, there was a lack of transparency and forthrightness, we opposed this project and asked the St. Charles City Council to do the same.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger. Any other comments?
Thank you.
Sure. Go ahead, Nancy. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Eric Khan. I'm with Continental Properties. Our address, I didn't sign in. I can provide that. It's W-134 and 8675 Executive Parkway in Menominee Falls, Wisconsin, 53051. So I'm here to respond to this resident's comments regarding our loan at South Elgin. First, I'd like to remind everyone that we have a testimonial letter from Steve Golden at South Elgin. We have a great relationship with the village there. Secondly, the HUD, the HUD loan that the resident is describing is a common 30-year HUD loan we put in place. It's a conventional loan, FHA insured, HUD insured. It's all market rate yet, so Continental's own capital is in that project. It's a 75% loan to cost. Our owner's 25% of capital is in that project.
We're, we're just ordering this far in advance of actually negotiating that redevelopment agreement because of the supply chain.
Okay, anything else? Okay, it's, uh, it was read into the record, so.
Move, move.
Second.
Moved by Lencioni, seconded by Weber. Any other questions? Nancy please call the roll.
Baumgard?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Patrilla?
Yes.
Worvall?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Fulkaivis?
Yes.
Haylightner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C, recommendation to approve a resolution for an electric utility improvement cost agreement with Greco-Durosa for the development of Pheasant Run industrial park. Do you have anything to add, City Administrator? Okay. Any questions regarding, regarding item C? No? Okay.
So move.
Moved by Worvall?
Second.
Seconded by Bezner. Nancy please call the roll.
Baumgard?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Patrilla?
Yes.
Worvall?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Fulkaivis?
Yes.
Haylightner?
Yes.
Thank you. Committee reports. Ron, anything further?
Uh, let me see here.
Think you have, you got it, too. Sorry, we got there really quickly.
Thank you, I was so impressed. Jeff, okay. Yes, um, item A two, motion to approve an agreement with Harris Computer Systems for North Star Customer Information System and Building Software Implementation Services and Cloud Hosting for a not to exceed cost of eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars and ten.
You got it, that's right, you got it.
I got it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Fulkaivis, seconded by Patrilla. Ryan, you have questions? Okay. Any questions?
No, yeah.
Yes.
Just, uh, the clarity, Heather, from you reviewing in the minutes, that the payment, new payment structure will be accomplished after the fact.
You're talking about in terms of the, um, I'm sorry, Kelly, and I keep calling it ACH, and it's not ACH. You're talking about the actual?
Oh, sorry, you want to talk about this one, right? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, the billings, yeah. It's okay, we're good. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, moved by Fulkaivis, seconded by Patrilla. If there are any questions, Nancy please call the roll.
Baumgard?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Patrilla?
Yes.
Worvall?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Fulkaivis?
Yes.
Haylightner?
Yes.
Thank you. Government Services Ed, anything further?
Nothing further.
Planning and Development, Steve?
Yes, I have two. Uh, item C one, um, motion to approve an ordinance annexing certain unincorporated territory to the city of St. Charles, Illinois.
Moved by Weber, seconded by Lencioni. Are there any questions or comments?
Yep.
Yes, Ryan?
Just, uh, clarity. The annexation is attached to the PUD, correct? Yes.
Russ?
Mr. Chairman answered, yeah.
Did Steve, Steve just?
That's okay. Russell, yeah.
We, I think we got the answer.
Yes.
The first item is just for the annexation of the property, and the development approvals are the second item.
Okay.
But are, don't we need to have a, a plan before we can annex it? That's what I'm asking. Is it, is the plan attached to the annexation?
It is not. It's an ordinance annexing the property, followed by an ordinance approving the development.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? We had a move, uh, we moved a second. Nancy please call the roll.
Baumgard?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Patrilla?
No.
Worvall?
No.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Fulkaivis?
Uh, no.
Haylightner?
No.
What was that number, Nancy?
Four, four.
Yes. Okay, um, item three?
Yes, C three, motion to approve an ordinance granting approval of a MAP amendment special use for PUD and PUD preliminary, preliminary plan for Springs at St. Charles.
Second. Okay, moved by Weber, seconded by Lencioni. Yes. Heather? The comments on city council agenda item? Correct, typically, they are structured after our vote that power city council is awarded by ordinance, that's why there was public comment about city planning commission as well as B and C. Yeah, Nick, is there anything else there, Heather?
No, I've got that. She's correct.
Okay.
There's been two other opportunities for public comment.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so. Okay, Nancy, any, any questions?
Yeah, just real quick. So, I think what I heard, um, Mr. Pepper say is that at committee, there was opportunity for public comments, is that correct?
But there's no opportunity now? I mean, it should be open for discussion, I would think.
I mean, I'm fine if we want to have public comment. I know we have a motion and second on the table. And Nick, I'll leave it to you.
It's totally up to the discretion of the chair and the council if they want to take it. You're not required to take it. That's why you've, you're on your third step of this by now, and if it'd been unanimous, it'd be in, uh, consent agenda. Uh, you know, as it is, you have to take the vote as a separate agenda item. Uh, you know, that's what public comment is for. This would be the third time that someone would be, uh, addressing this matter, but if you want to take public comment, Mayor, that's up to you.
Sure, I'll welcome public comment. Um, I would just ask that, you know, if someone has already stated something, just either ditto it, but we don't need to hear the same thing again. So feel free to raise your hand, and we'll call you up to the mic, and just state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Ron Jaeger, J-A-E-G-E-R. I'm a resident at, uh, forty-sixteen Pheasant Court in St. Charles. Thank you for allowing us to have comments. Um, I believe each of you received a copy of my letter. I've got others, if you would like. I would just like to read it. And the reason for comments today, I think, is really there's new information from what the, um, uh, Development Committee was made aware of through the application. Dear City Council and Community and Development, Economic Development Commission, since your Community and Development Committee meeting, public hearing on this project, I have come to learn that while the developer, Continental Properties, included in their application information that this project was private equity funded, I have since learned that while Continental may fund construction and early operational funding using private equity, they apply for and refinance their projects through HUD. As you may probably be aware, HUD refinancing or financing requires some level of subsidized housing units and provides for subsidized income-based housing referred to as Section Eight. While I could not find any specific information on their participation in Section Forty-two TIF financing, I do, I would not be surprised if this, um, also would get mixed into their financing plan. Because of this misrepresentation by the developer, and my experience with Section Eight and, and Section Forty-two TIF housing in Peoria, we withdraw our support of this project and additionally vehemently oppose this development plan. That was not presented during the, um, informational meetings. And four, let me share my Peoria experience. We were living in Peoria for twenty-four years on the west side of that town, in a single-family area. In the late nineteen nineties, early two thousands, two six-hundred-plus-unit apartment developments provided HUD, HUD, provide PUD approvals and were developed, Lexington Hills and Aspen Bluffs apartments and townhomes. Both were approved as market-rate developments with the understanding that Section Eight and Forty-two would be their fallback business plan. Once operational, both projects quickly converted their operations and social, to, uh, to those, um, uh, forms of housing. What followed was social problems escalated. There was a decline in the parental involvement in the public schools in that area, Pleasant Valley. Concurrently, the surrounding residential communities became unofficially designated as a high-crime-rate area by the Peoria Police Department. We only learned of this when we tried to sell our home in two thousand and six. We had an extremely difficult time attracting showings, and only after we pressed our realtor did we learn that the impact of these two housing developments on our homes value. It took us twenty-four months to sell our home. In order to accomplish this, we lost approximately half of the market value because of the undesirable area that had developed due to these apartments. We don't want this in our area again. Out of curiosity, I researched the current situation of these developments. What I found was shocking. On April tenth of this year, Lexington Home Management Offices were burned out. Yes, burned out. They have, they have severe drug problems and are hauling vehicles without permits from the property. There is a new prohibition list of rules that management of those facilities to residents are causing evictions. I do, I did not research the, uh, Peoria Police Department activities, but can only imagine what we would find, uh, in this disclosure. Ownership is the only gold standard to ensure that those who reside in a development will care enough about their home and neighborhood, the schools, and all the other aspects of ensuring equality experience. From my brief, brief background and check into Continental's history and means of financing their projects, not mentioning the fact that they, um, there was a lack of transparency and forthrightness, we opposed this project and asked the St. Charles City Council to do the same.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger. Any other comments?
Thank you.
Sure, go ahead. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Eric Khan. I'm with Continental Properties. Uh, our address, I didn't sign in, I can provide that, it's W one three four and eight six seven five Executive Parkway in Menominee Falls, Wisconsin, five, uh, five three oh five one. Uh, so I'm, I'm here to respond to this resident's comments regarding our loan at South Elgin. First, I'd like to remind everyone that we have a testimonial letter from Steve Golden at South Elgin. We have a great relationship with the village there. Secondly, the HUD, the HUD loan that the resident is describing is a common thirty-year HUD loan we put in place. It's a conventional loan, FHA insured, HUD insured. It's all market rate, yeah. So Continental's own capital is in that project. It's a seventy-five percent loan cost. Our owner's twenty-five percent of capital is in that project. There isn't any other private equity that was sourced for that, um, that stabilized mortgage. So, the other thing I'd like to point out is, uh, we're not collecting any Section Eight vouchers for any leases, leases at that property currently. So I, I took a look at today's in-place rents, which I have for you today, and this is as of close of business yesterday. So our rents there, on average, are eighteen, one thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars a month, ranging from one thousand five hundred and ten for the smallest efficiency to two thousand two hundred and fifty for the largest three-bedroom. Beyond that, I, I figured I could maybe describe our resident profiles, because Continental is the operator, uh, we're, we are the owner. Much like all our communities that may have been described previously, we collect lots of information on our residents. We do not third-party manage, uh, these communities. Uh, so with that, they need to prove out three times their income. Uh, so currently, at South Elgin, um, over, uh, approximately eighty-seven percent of our residents earn over sixty thousand. So we have the full breakdown on income band, so, um, less than one percent earn between twenty and forty thousand a year, twelve percent earn between forty and sixty thousand a year, uh, eighty-seven percent earn, earn over sixty thousand, sixty-five percent earn over eighty thousand and up. Similar to the demographics here in the city of St. Charles, being over a hundred thousand median household income, forty-eight percent of our households earn over a hundred thousand dollars at that specific community, and I'm happy to provide additional information on that. Uh, secondly, I'd like to, to explain that we intend with this development to pay into the Inclusionary Housing Fund. We do not anticipate any units leasing for less than eighty percent of area median income per HUD standards for Chicago. Lastly, I mentioned this in some communication, uh, to staff earlier, uh, actually last Friday, Section Eight vouchers are going to become a protected class of income at the beginning of next year per a House Bill. So I'd like to invite our, our attorney, Kate McCracken, to describe that House Bill that was recently passed on May twenty-fourth, which will require any operator to accept vouchers as a form of income as a protected class throughout the state. It's been the case in Cook County for many years, but that is coming to the entire state of Illinois come, come the new year. So, if you wouldn't mind, please, uh, tell us a little about that.
Hello, I'm Kate McCracken, M-C-C-R-A-C-K-E-N. Um, I'm just going to keep this really brief, but I think it's really important that everybody take a thoughtful look at House Bill twenty-seven seventy-five. At this point, and I, and I think everybody needs to, uh, start remembering this, for any landlord, uh, House Bill twenty-seven seventy-five is going to ban discrimination in housing selection based on source of income. So, the legislation essentially mandates that landlords, if you meet the income requirement, and if that income requirement is met and is supplemented by voucher, that landlord has to accept those vouchers. That's going to be the law in Illinois. So, for everybody that isn't thrilled with Section Eight, at this point, the law says we cannot consider and we cannot discriminate against people's income being partially supplemented by Section Eight vouchers.
Thank you.
So I would just ask everybody to keep that in mind when we start talking about Section Eight housing.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yeah, Mr. Lemke.
Arthur Lemke, uh, in the second ward, that's, uh, three-two-one-four Black Hawk Trail in the city of St. Charles. And it might, um, um, what I intend to ask here is the fact that we have an annexation on the table and more than a, um, um, plurality vote is required, um, can, can you describe how many votes are required for an annexation?
Attorney Pepper, can you direct the floor?
Yeah, um, for a straight annexation, it's simply a majority vote is required. You're, you might be thinking of an annexation agreement?
An annexation agreement.
Which requires a supermajority of two-thirds, I think. Uh, but there's no annexation agreement involved in this annexation, so supermajority's not required.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments? Go ahead, sir.
Madam Mayor, member of the City Council, thank you, this opportunity to speak with you guys. This is the only opportunity that the residents have to speak to the entire full City Council on this, on this agenda.
Our immediate City Council.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my name is Nicholas with an H, Durzanowski, D like David, Z-I-E-R-Z-A-N-O-W-S-K-I. I live in twenty-four fifty-six Lehman Drive in West Chicago. I am different because I do not live in the city of St. Charles, but I am very similar to all of you sitting on the desk. I served ten years on the West Chicago City Council. I live in the Cornerstone Lakes neighborhood, right to the east of this development. I know what it's like to take tough votes. I've taken many in my time. The yes vote's the easiest vote for you to take, because you're everybody's friend. That no vote is the hardest vote to take. Uh, yes, I live in West Chicago, but I live in the community. My library district's in St. Charles, my school district is in St. Charles, my church is in St. Charles. I spend the vast majority of my sales tax dollars within your community and all the grocery stores, and especially at Costco. This is a great-looking development. I, I have no problems with the development. It's the placement of it. This is not the place for this development. You have townhouses to your east, or, I'm sorry, single-family homes to your east, you have your townhouses at Vezzeron Trails, you have your townhouses at Kingswood. This piece of property should be more of a residential, single-family home or townhouses, not a high-density apartment building. I also sat on the Development Committee for ten years at the city of West Chicago and voted on numerous development requirements. This would not have, look, this would not fly in the city of West Chicago under Development Committee because of the density of this particular property. Hopefully, you guys will take a look at this. Think, think as a community as a whole, not just your wards, or for the aldermen in the central and west parts of the city, it's an easy vote, because it's nowhere near your house. But think about the community that surrounds this particular area and how dense this is going to be. If you really want to bring inclusionary housing where it will hit, bring it here into the center of town. All the restaurants and bars, they need the people that can afford the higher income to be able to walk to work, or work in, in, in other areas that are down here. There's nothing out there to walk to but jewel. I hope this doesn't impact the development of the Charlestown Mall. I've lived here for twenty-four years and watched that mall languish, on the vine, as you all have as well. I hope that this does not impact it, so take that in consideration when you, when you, when you cast your vote today. You might be known as the City Council that killed the development of the long-awaited Charlestown Mall property. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and second on the table, right, Nancy? Okay?
Yeah, can I, can I just ask a, a process question? Sorry.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Um, in our packet, we got all those letters, correct? And I, and Russ, I think that they were addressed to your department, correct? There was a lot of letters to get at five o'clock on Friday. I'm wondering, you know, maybe if somehow it can be told in the future that if they want to get to the alderman directly, maybe they need to, you know, email us, but going through the department, you know, I know that it's, it's.
You know, emails are available online for all aldermen.
Yes, correct, correct.
So that, that is one way that.
Right, right, but I'm just wondering if they knew we didn't get these till late in the day Friday? Yeah, that that's all because it went to the department.